All right, I'd like to call this October 16th meeting of the Goodyear Planning Commission Order. If we could all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Do we have a roll call, please?
Chairman Schlosser.
Here.
Vice Chair Peters.
Here.
Commissioner Barnes.
Here.
Commissioner Bray.
Here.
Commissioner Miller.
Here.
Commissioner Short.
Here.
And Commissioner Hamilton.
Here.
All right, thank you. We're all here. Item number four, the minutes from the last meeting. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion from Commissioner Miller, second from Vice Chair Peters. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item number five, public comments. Anybody from the public that wishes to speak on a non-agenda item this evening? All right, seeing none, thank you. Item number six, disclosure of ex parte communications. Anybody? Seeing none. Item number seven, old business, no old business. Item number eight, new business. Case number 13-500-0007. I remembered that this time. Preliminary plat for Pebble Creek Phase Two Unit 43B. Good evening, Joe.
Good evening. Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, as you noted, this is a consideration of the preliminary plat for Pebble Creek Phase Two Unit 43B. The property is situated within the Pebble Creek Phase Two development just west of Cerebral Avenue, south of Indian School Road, and along an extension of West Indianola Avenue, and is bordered to the west by the RV storage area within the Pebble Creek This particular phase of development, or preliminary plat, is for a, what they call a villa product, in the, under the Pebble Creek planned area development, which is essentially a duplex product with an individual home on an individual lot but attached on one side. The PAD provides for the ability to develop the villa product in any portion of the subdivision. And based on a Development Agreement Amendment that was done in 2005, it also allows for transfer of densities within the project. However, this one does not involve a transfer of density because the area is already designated for two to five units per acre, and this one is at 4.9. You may or may not recall that Development Agreement Amendment was intended to remove proposed residential units that were going to be within the 65 DNL noise contour for Luke Air Force Base, and in a cooperative arrangement, it was, an agreement was reached where they would not put any residential development within that area, which is consistent with the mission of Luke and helps preserve, keeping Luke where it belongs. The other Luke, not this Luke. The preliminary plat was approved as part of a preliminary plat for units 42, 42A, and 49 back in 2010. The other units have subsequently been reviewed and approved since then, except for this one. And since it changed from single-family lots to duplex lots, it is going through the preliminary plat approval process once again. To give you an idea of the duplex layout, as I said before, with a duplex product, two adjacent homes are situated along a common wall, and the same typical setbacks that you find in Pebble Creek are applied, except for the line where is the common wall. Basically, staff has reviewed the proposed preliminary plat and finds it to be consistent with the Pebble Creek PAD and the subdivision regulations. We are recommending approval of the preliminary plat, subject to the stipulations specified in the staff report. And I would stand for any questions that you might have at this point. The applicant is recommended, represented by Mr. Mark Maloney with BNR Engineering, who's here if there's any additional information the Commission would like regarding the proposed development.
Okay, thank you. Anything from the Commission at this point? Was there a neighborhood meeting or meetings?
Mr. Chairman, on a preliminary plat, there is no requirement for a neighborhood meeting.
Sure. Okay.
I do, I have a question probably of the applicant.
Okay.
Okay. I found it interesting that they were going to do a, the duplex product. Thought that's, it's a good use for that, that area up there. I guess my question is, and I don't think, they don't have that duplex product anywhere else I can ask that of the applicant, but in Pebble Creek?
Mr. Chairman, at present time, they do not have that product in Pebble Creek.
Okay.
They've developed it at another of their projects, but not in Pebble Creek yet.
Okay. All right, thank you, Joe.
Okay.
The applicant wish to speak?
Good evening. Please state your name and address for the record.
Mark Maloney, BNR Engineering, 9666 East Riggs Road, Sun Lakes, Arizona. Primarily, I'm here to answer any questions you may have regarding the development. As Joe mentioned, we do have this product. This is something that we've developed over the past year or two during the, kind of the change in market demand and so forth. We have introduced this product in our, at our Casa Grande project, and it's been highly successful. We started out with roughly about a 40, 40-unit subdivision, which sold out in a matter of months, and we're on to the second subdivision in that area, which is proposing about, I think, another 60 units out there. Of course, you know, Robson believes in providing a quality product. Certainly, we don't want to introduce, you know, I think the thinking behind the duplex product is not necessarily a lower-cost product, but a product that fits other lifestyles. People that, that have other homes in other states that, that just want a place to come and, and arrive and play some golf and, you know, experience the community. That's really the intent of this product. The quality of the product will be the same as, as any of the other products offered within Pebble Creek. I did bring a picture of the product that we're offering in our Casa Grande project, just to give you an idea on, this isn't the exact same product that we'll be using in Pebble Creek. It's currently being looked at by the architects and, and the Robson executives to decide exactly what it's going to be. But I can kind of give you an idea on what we have done in our other project. If this shows up on Elmo, I'm not sure I can. I'm not a pro with this. So I, you know, the idea is, is we want to make this look like a house, so it fits in the area. We also believe that this is a good, good use for, for the area, you know, being out of the noise contour zone, but kind of buffering, kind of a transitional area between the golf course maintenance yard and RV yard, and then transitioning into a different type of product, a duplex product, a little higher density, but still within the ranges that are allowed in the area, and then buffering from the larger houses that abut the golf course to the south. So we believe that this is a great, a great use for the area in question, and certainly here to answer any questions you might have about the, the product that we're offering.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, good.
Mr. Miller?
I went online to see this, and I think it's a great idea, and I think it's a great product. I just have one question. Is there going to be a separate HOA?
I believe that we, in the Casa Grande project, we did have a separate HOA with regards to maintaining landscaping and so forth. So there probably will be a separate homeowners association with that regard, but primarily under the same rules and restrictions as, as the rest of Pebble Creek. It would just be for maintenance.
Well, that was my only question, but I know many people who, and living there, many people who are very interested and thrilled that you're going to this style.
Good, good.
I have a question. Leslie and I both live in Pebble Creek, so we have a little bit of insight. My question is, you're talking about the same quality as the rest of the homes in Pebble Creek. Pebble Creek is unique construction, the Integra block, which the other communities don't have, or is it going to be Integra block?
You know, I haven't seen the architectural plans on this, but everything we've done in Pebble Creek does contain the Integra block, does contain energy savings options and so forth, and I really don't think, and again, I don't have a concrete answer for that, but I really think that it wouldn't be in our interest to change up the building type, just based on efficiency. Everything is, every, all the contractors are familiar with that type of construction. It's what we do out there. So I can't categorically say-
There's also quite a bit of interest in current residents that are older and that have been there for a while, and to moving into this type of a product, so they might have that expectation too.
We've gotten that response actually from all, all our other communities, too, and other planning and zoning commission hearings. I've gone to town council meetings and so forth. Many people saying that, well, I have a house in Casa Grande, and we're thinking about getting one of these, you know, and, and so the response has been phenomenal, and certainly we want to move forward as quickly as possible, and, you know, with the market being the way it is, this has been, I think, a product that's really helped us over the past year.
Anybody else from this side? Anybody else? I think Commissioner Miller sort of beat me to the punch, but in regards to the HOA or the second HOA, that's going to take care of the landscaping, so the folks that live there. Mike, you explained.
Like I said, that's how it's been handled in our other project, that, that is quite a bit further along than this. The houses have been built, the HOA's been established. We're still in the process of coming up with the final product type. I, I don't believe that the HOA has been established. So, you know, to be honest, I can't guarantee you that there will be a second HOA, but I know that's the direction that we've headed with our other developments. So it makes sense that they would.
But I guess what I was getting at is, you described the folks that would want to buy a product like this. They just want to come and go play golf and not mess around with landscaping and everything, so that, do they have to, you don't know that yet?
I'm, I'm not sure.
All right, no?
You know, that's, I would hate to throw something out there. I know, I really don't feel, I'm hoping, based on the feelings that I'm getting, that that's not a, an answer that would change your mind in terms of support of, of the project at this type. So I wouldn't want to just throw something out there and, and end up being a liar.
No, my, my question's more posed just for curiosity.
And informational, and I understand that. I, I, certainly, I think these are some of the questions that I, I think would be good to have answers for as we move forward and move forward to council, and I appreciate the, the input, and I will certainly see if I can get a few more answers to that, assuming that we can move this forward today and you'll support the project. I think those are some questions that I think would be valid to have, you know, at, at council, and, and might be able to provide, provide you with that information at that time.
One more thing, will there be a meeting of the residents to just inform them of the details?
I don't know that there's been a plan to actually have a meeting with, with the other Pebble Creek residents, you know, with it not being a, a project that requires special use, that requires a zone change. The requirements for a, a public meeting aren't required. Certainly, the community, I believe, as you know, and probably have heard in the past, you probably heard about this prior to it being scheduled for, for P&amp;Z, because you live in, in the neighborhood. So certainly, I mean, the people are aware of it, this is not something that we're trying to, you know, keep, keep close to our chest, you know. We want, we want this out there, that this new product's coming, but I don't know that we've necessarily planned on setting up a meeting to, I guess, unveil the product to the community.
Let me help answer that question. As the Commissioner already knows, I'm the Communications Coordinator for the Pebble Creek HOA, and at a board meeting today, they approached me to work with corporate in the future to come up with frequently asked questions to explain how these two HOAs are going to work together, and how all of this is going to play out for the residents. I don't have that information yet, but they plan to give all that information to, to the residents through our HOA website and other means that we have to communicate with the residents. So they will get that information.
Good.
Just don't have it yet.
I don't get a sense that the residents would have, be in opposition to this kind of product anyway.
No, I have not. I, I have a lot of dealings with the residents in Pebble Creek on a continuous basis, and I have not heard a negative thing about it.
The nice thing about a duplex product, a good example's that in Verado, as you drive north on Verado Way, before the town center, off to the right of the east, that's a duplex product, and it looks like huge, much larger than this, but looks like huge McMansions there, but it's duplex product, so sort of adds character to the, to the community.
I believe, I believe it does. Also, I wanted to apologize about not formally addressing the Commissioners. I sometimes get wrapped up on ideas and start explaining the product without formally addressing you, so I promise, I, I apologize for that.
Oh, we're not too fancy here, so we're all right. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I don't have any cards, but is there anybody from the public that wishes to speak? Anybody else from the Commission? All right, I'll close the public hearing. Nothing else from the Commission? Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve case number 13-500-0007.
Second.
I have a motion from Commissioner Peters, and a second from Commissioner Bray. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, thank you very much, we appreciate it. All right, item, case number 13-300-0003, use permit for outside display and storage for Cal Ranch Stores.
Hello, Mr. Chairman and Commission members. This application is a use permit to allow outside display and storage of merchandise for sale at a proposed Cal Ranch store at 2075 North Pebble Creek Parkway within the market at Estrella Falls Commercial Center. You may all be familiar with the location. It's at the northeast corner of McDowell and Pebble Creek Parkway, just south of Monte Vista Road. It's currently occupied by Abash's Grocery Store, and so the area that's under consideration is that, that's outlined in red. Under the PAD for the Goodyear Planned Regional Center, outside storage and, outside display is allowed, outside storage requires a use permit, and since this is a combination of display and storage, the use permit is being required. There are three areas that are affected. One is a large area in the parking lot in front of the store. A second area is an area in front of, immediately adjacent to and in front of the store by the entrance, and a third area in the back of the store, which is basically south of the, of the existing facility. Cal Ranch Stores, if you're not familiar with their operation, is a retail store that caters to farmers and ranchers, but is not, also offers products to the general public. There are some items that they sell that are rather large, that do not lend themselves for being taken in and out of the store on a routine basis, and so for that reason, they've asked for the use permit to allow an outside display and storage area in the locations that are proposed. The outdoor display area in the parking lot will displace about 32 parking spaces, but overall, the site has 1,756 spaces provided within the market at Estrella Falls, and 186 spaces remain in front of the, the actual retail box. The display and storage areas, we do not anticipate them having any conflicts with the fire lanes or movement of traffic within the area. And we have recommended, made some recommendations over the initial proposal to provide additional screening and embellishments over what was initially proposed. This exhibit is slightly different from the exhibit that you have in your packets, which came in subsequent to the staff report being drafted and distributed to the applicant. In our recommendations, we, we made a couple of recommendations. One was that the area within the parking lot be embellished with a stone knee wall, upon which, the top of which would be the wrought iron fence, and that the wrought iron fence be supplemented with a fabric screening material to improve the appearance of the display area. Likewise, we've recommended similarly, except with, with the exception of the knee wall for the area in front of the store, which is represented here, where it would have the, oh, and we also recommended that they have stone columns at intervals, intervals of about 30 feet. The area in front of the store would match accordingly with stone columns, with the wrought iron, with this fabric screening, and then the area in the rear would be wrought iron with fabric screening on the sides that are exposed to the public, and otherwise, the, the area that is not exposed to the public in, in the back here, which is basically between the storage area and the building, would be just wrought iron fencing. We initially made some recommendations to consider putting a cover over the facility, but after further reconsideration of that, we felt that the options of providing a cover may actually draw more attention to the storage area than, than lessen the attention, and plus, Mesa Rich has indicated that the terms and conditions of some of their lease agreements work against providing a cover that might obstruct the visibility of other inline shops or other major boxes. So based on that conversation, and the choices that we looked at as far as being potential covers for it, we've basically deleted that requirement, and have provided you with a revised set of stipulations that we'd ask you to consider, which I distributed to you right before the meeting. Basically, stipulation number one stayed the same, two has been modified slightly, just to clarify that in the areas for display and storage, that, and none of the items should be, exceed the height of the wrought iron fence and screening. Item three is still the same. We will require a site plan amendment. That'll get more detailed review to make sure that particularly the area in the back is not infringe on access to the trash enclosure serving the use in the adjacent shops. Stipulation four, we've modified to include the installation of the two-foot-high masonry wall, which the applicant has agreed to, with a wrought iron fence on top of it, and the, and the columns that is, masonry columns at intervals of 30 feet, with the wrought iron fencing being covered with a screening fabric of a coordinated color. The display area in item number five, in front of the store, is to be enclosed with a wrought iron fence, seven feet in height, covered with screening, and then have masonry columns at each end, which simply reflects what was shown by the revised site plan application, or site plan that was submitted. And then lastly, the wrought iron fencing around the outdoor display and storage area at the rear should be a minimum of seven feet high on all sides, include a screening fabric of a coordinated color on the south and east sides, and have masonry columns at three most visible corners, which would basically be masonry columns here, here, and So with that, I would conclude my presentation. There are representatives here from both Mesa Rich and Cal Ranch Stores that you may wish to have addressed the Commission or answer any questions.
Okay. I wasn't aware that Bash, it's Bash's, right? Yeah. That they're, what's the timing? Bash's?
That probably could be best addressed by the applicant, and I defer to the applicant to answer that question.
All right, thank you. Thanks, Joe. Welcome, please state your name and address for the record.
Sure. I'm Rob Bassett, 11411 North Tatum Boulevard, with Mesa Rich representing the center. So I kind of hesitate to give timeframes with Bash's. I'm trying to be respectful of the employees that are there, but yes, we've been working with Bash's, they've been a great partner to keep them open.
But they're still operating today?
They're still operating, yeah.
That was my question.
So we've, I want to call it a partnership. We've partnered with them to keep them open since their bankruptcy, and there are other grocers coming into the intersection from, it looks like that deal's going to happen, and not on our center. So the grocery dollar is getting further split, and we really need to be looking at alternative uses for this space, so.
Okay. Anybody else? Is someone here from Cal Stores?
Yes.
Well, my name is Bill Bunker, 2297 West, 11625 South Riverton, Utah, and I'm representing Cal Ranch Stores, and it's my pleasure to be here with you tonight.
Yeah, thank you for coming. I guess my question, I'm not familiar with your stores, I apologize.
Okay.
In a minute or less, can you sort of summarize? I know I read the letter and with the staff report, but sort of summarize what your stores are.
We're, we started in 1959 in Idaho Falls, Idaho, with one store there. We now have 23 stores up and running. We grand opened a store in Levine this last weekend, and Casa Grande this last weekend also. So this will be our 24th store here in, in Goodyear. We're a general merchandiser. We, we cater to the, we were, we were built catering to the ranch and farmer, but anymore, we're, we still have a lot of the products that they look for, but we're a general merchandiser also. We carry a complete western wear section for men and women, boots and workwear of all types, camping, fishing, hunting, those type of sporting goods departments, products for campers and trailers, repair and whatnot, lighting and things like that. We have probably nothing that you can't buy in four or five other places in your community, but you would be hard pressed to find any place you can go in and buy them all under one roof. So we've been, it's been said that if we don't have it, then you really don't need it, so.
Where is the store in Levine, 51st and Baseline?
30, on the intersection of 3500 and, and Southern.
It's, oh, okay. Where the, is it Coles?
It was a Mervin's building.
Mervin's, that's right, yeah. Interesting. Huh, I'll have to go check it out.
Please do.
I look forward to seeing your store here in Goodyear.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anything from the Commission? Questions? All right. Anybody from the public? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Can I get a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve case number 13-300-0003.
Second.
I have a motion from Vice Chair Peters, and a second from Commissioner Bray. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, thank you. Staff Communications?
I just, I was going to-
I'd rather have you standing in front of us. No, I'm kidding, I'm kidding.
I wanted to remind you about the joint session, Monday night, Monday evening, October 21st, coming right around the corner, and I understand we distributed copies of the general plan as drafted to date, to, before the meeting, so hopefully you have an opportunity to take a look at it and provide some input back at the joint meeting on Monday.
Is that the primary purpose of the meeting, is to discuss the general plan, or is there other agenda items as well?
As far as, is there anything?
As far as, is there anything?
There are other agenda items that evening, but it's the primary purpose of the meeting. That's correct.
All right, is that it?
Mm-hmm.
All right, thank you, guys. For the record, two meetings in a row adjourned at six thirty. Thank you very much.
I would let you know that there's, the GAIN event is this Saturday. If you ever, if you have an opportunity to go to the GAIN event, getting Arizona's involved in nighttime activities. No, what is it? In neighborhoods.
Neighborhoods, at the ballpark, starting at five o'clock Saturday evening.
Thanks.
All right, thank you. Meeting adjourned.